All right, with that, I'm going to call the June 4th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Just a little note up... Just a little note upfront. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12th, 2020, the Town of Situate Public Meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be live recorded by Situate Community Television and can be viewed live on cable television Channel 9. Participation for the public hearing will be available by audio conference bridge. For audio participation, call-in can be accessed via any of the numbers I am about to list. Please note, long-distance charges may apply depending upon the caller's plan. Follow the instructions for the calling service. Questions or comments will be allowed during the moderated Q&amp;A period following the audio directions. Otherwise, your phone lines will be muted as you listen to the audio. The call-in numbers available are 425-436-6308. An alternative call-in number is 425-436-6338. And the third alternative call-in number is 425-436-6300. The access code, which is to be entered when prompted, is 538-960-pound. Again, the access code is 538-960-pound. So again, this is the beginning of the Town of Situate Zoning Board of Appeals' June 4th meeting. And this meeting is... We are doing our best tonight to catch up on some of the applications since our last meeting, which was in February, if I'm remembering correctly. With that, our first application tonight, continued from February 20th, is that of Brian O'Neill Sr., Esquire of 35 Gannett Road in Situate, which was a request for a special permit finding pursuant to 48 Section 6 or 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaws to raise and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming accessory structure, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Again, for the property at 35 Gannett Road. We have received a written request to withdraw this application. Do I have a motion to grant that request?
Move to grant?
All those in favor... Or do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
On Kavanaugh's second.
Aye.
Aye.
Well, the ayes have it. That motion is withdrawn. Our second application on the evening. Yes.
Um, just, if people are watching on, I'm guessing, on cable television or something, say, perhaps you could give the access code again with a bit of warning. Grab your pencils if you need to write this down. I'm going to give the access code in five minutes or something.
Sure. So I will, uh, I will give the access code and the first dial-in number after every application. And so that, again, if people want to grab a pen, is 425-436-6308. And then, when prompted, the access code is 538-960-pound. And that is for the audio conference line, so that you will be able to participate during the public comment section. With that, our second application on the evening is that of Jane and Patrina Aniletto of 351 Highland Street in Marshfield, requesting a special permit finding pursuant to MGL 48 Section 6 and/or Sections 470 and 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, or any other relief the Board of Appeals deems necessary to allow the raising and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot located at 148 Jericho Road in Situate. With that, Mr. Morse, I believe you are on the line for the applicant.
That is correct.
Well, Greg, if you could give us a, uh, a quick explanation of what is happening here.
This is Greg Morse, a registered engineer with Morse Engineering. I'm representing the property owner and the applicant, the Aniletto family, that's owned this property for in excess of 70 years. They're proposing to raise and reconstruct a single-family home at 148 Jericho Road. There's an existing house on the property now. The house was built in 1972. It's approximately 1,800 square feet in area, but the lot itself is non-conforming. The lot is non-conforming with respect to lot area, frontage, and lot width. It is located in R3 zoning district, and it's also located in the floodplain and watershed protection overlay district. The proposal is to take down the existing dwelling and construct a new dwelling in its place. The new dwelling is a little bit closer to Jericho Road, so we pulled it away from Situate Harbor, which is the, um, land to the south of the property. The house does comply with all applicable zoning setbacks for side yard, um, front yard, and rear yard dimensions, but the new house, as proposed, is 2,329 square feet, which represents a 29.3% increase. Your bylaw specifies, according to Section 810.2, that an increase of greater than 20% requires a special permit, so we seek that. We also seek a special permit with, accordance with the bylaw, Section 470, which is the floodplain and watershed protection overlay district. This property here would be an elevated house, it would be elevated above the floodplain. It would be equipped with breakaway FEMA compliant panels on the basement, and it would be subject to an order of conditions by the Conservation Commission when that time comes. I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Greg. I don't have any particular questions on this application. Ed, do you have anything?
I'm just noting that it is in compliance with, um, front yard setback, side yard setback, uh, being removed, moved back from the harbor, um, within the setback, uh, on the plan. I think, other than changing the size of the lot, they can't do anything else.
Here we go. Tom, anything? Tom, do we have you? Okay. Well, we...
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh. Do you have anything to add on that one?
Existing... Just a question, is the existing driveway going to remain?
Yes, it is.
Okay, no new curb cuts, and that's sewer, that's part of that Cedar Point sewer?
Yes, yeah, it's existing sewer service.
Okay.
All right.
I don't have anything else.
Brian, anything?
Thank you, Anthony. I have, uh, no questions or comments.
All right. George, anything to add?
Nope, looks good to me.
All right. So just quickly, once again, I'm going to, we're going to unmute the public. If you're not speaking, we ask that you try to keep it down or use your own phones feature to mute. Again, quickly, if you're watching on the television, the dial-in number is 425-436-6308.
Q&amp;A session has started.
And the access code is 538-960.
Press *6 to raise your hand to be put in the queue. Press, press *6.
If anyone who is on the conference call who has anything to add or ask about this application, please press *6 on your phone, and you will be put in a queue to be heard. And we do have one.
Hello?
Hi, this is Patrina. And hi, I'm Jane Aniletto. We just wanted to say we're, you know, we're looking forward to it, getting the house out of the V-zone, eliminating the foundation that's currently flooding with, um, with the elevated tides, and to just hope to keep us in the family for another new generation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So that was the applicant. They're, they're for it.
End of the Q&amp;A.
Again, so we are ending the Q&amp;A on that application. There we go.
Q&amp;A session is over.
And with that, do we have a motion? And just keeping in mind, we, we're going to comply with 470 as well if we're making a positive motion.
Uh, move to grant the relief under 48 Section 6 and Section 470 and 810 of the Situate zoning bylaw, that the proposed raising and reconstructing of the existing home at 148 Jericho Road will not be more substantially detrimental to the, um, let me see, um, to the existing neighborhood, and that the, um, proposed reconstructing is suitable under 470.9, um, because such, uh, reconstructing is taking place in the floodplain and watershed protection district.
And will not create any new nonconformity.
All right. Do we have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Who seconded?
Tom seconded. That was Tom. And we have a...
That was me.
We have a unanimous yes on that one. Here we go.
Let's go next door.
I'll light that if you'd like.
I would love that.
Who's writing it?
Uh, Ed is writing that. That was Ed. All right, again, folks who are watching on television, if you would like to dial in, which provides you an opportunity to be heard during the public comment section after each application, the telephone number is 425-436-6308. And the access code to enter when prompted is 538-960-pound. With that, our third application on the evening is that of Paul and Deborah Jablonsky of 12017 Tavoli Park Row in San Diego, California, requesting a special permit or finding pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Sections 470 and 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, and any other relief the Board of Appeals deems necessary to allow the raising and reconstruction of a single-family home, single-family dwelling, excuse me, on a pre-existing non-conforming lot located at 166 Jericho Road. Greg, would you like to take us through this again quickly?
Sure.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, this is Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering. I'm representing the property owner, Paul and Deborah Jablonsky. The property is located at 166 Jericho Road. The property itself is in the R3 zoning district. It's also located within the floodplain and watershed protection overlay district. It was developed with a single-family home on it in 1972. Um, the lot itself is non-conforming with respect to lot area, lot width, frontage, and the existing house out there is non-compliant with the left and the right side setbacks. The proposal here is to take down the existing dwelling and construct a new one in its place. The new single-family home is approximately 4,500 square feet in size. It represents a 197% increase in size. Of note, the property immediately to the north, the direct abutter, uh, the adjacent property is 4,879 square feet in size, so it is in keeping with the abutting property. The new foundation would be a FEMA compliant foundation equipped with breakaway panels. All living space would be elevated above the floodplain elevation, and the Conservation Commission would be, uh, requiring an order of conditions for compliance with the FEMA. I turn it over to you for any questions or comments. I do want to also note that with the proposed building, it does correct the left side yard setback, um, and it maintains the existing right nonconformity, which is 3.8 feet from the lot line.
And that's, Greg, that's to a covered porch or covered deck there on the, on the right-hand side?
On, on the right-hand side, it's to the actual building itself, um, for the majority of the site, and then at the back of the proposed house is a, um, is, is a deck off the back. But no, that is to the building itself.
Okay. Yep. All right. Uh, with that, Brian, any questions on this one?
Um, Greg, the drainage easement on the right side, is there, um, a subsurface, uh, culvert existing?
Yes, there is. Um, I think I am, yes, I included a layout of the drainage as our record plan with the application. There is a pipe that is in that easement which drains the Situate Harbor. Um, it's subsurface, and it would be maintained during the construction.
Okay. Other than that, I'm glad to see it's coming back from the lot line on the, uh, I guess the easterly...
North.
Easterly side, the west side?
North.
I don't know, on the, on the left side. And, uh, so that's good, and, uh, it'll be FEMA compliant, and will probably be more in keeping with the neighborhood, uh, as it exists in 2020.
All right. George, anything to add?
Um, no.
Okay.
No.
Tom?
No. I think I'm, it would've been the same questions, but he just answered them on the last part.
All right. I'm gonna cut in front of Ed. And Ed, I'd love to hear your thoughts, or anybody else that wants to jump in, on, it looks to me like we had a little bit of structure, 3.8 feet from a lot line, and now we're gonna have a whole lot more structure, 3.8 feet from the lot line. I'm not sure how concerning we should be, or how detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood that is, but I, I do think I'd like to talk about it quickly. I'd love to hear somebody else's thoughts on that.
Well, um, Brian Sullivan here. Anthony, you could make an argument that it is an intensification of a pre-existing nonconformity, then you reach the second prong of the test.
Right.
And I think it passes the second prong of the test.
Okay.
And if you look at the, the photo submitted by Greg, the color photo, um, it is very much, uh, to me, it resembles the, uh, the country house in the city. And it, it'll, I think it'll, it'll fit in with the existing neighborhood, uh, more so than the, the current house, uh, stands out. And, and it'll be FEMA compliant, which I think is important, given the sensitivity of this area.
No? I see what you're saying. And, and for the benefit of the public, the second prong of the test that Brian is referring to is that, well, we, we may look at this as an intensification of a lot, nonconformity, the second prong being whether that intensification is substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Ed, anything to add?
Yeah, I'll weigh in. The, um, the easement, um, as drawn, is a 10-foot easement along the sideline of the property, but it's, uh, choked off by the existing structure. What they're proposing to do is open, I don't think they'll rewrite the easement, um, but the, uh, the access to that easement will be improved by moving the entire structure 10 feet off that side yard, uh, the sideline setback. And I think the other aspect of it is, because the, the lot is somewhat trapezoidal, or is trapezoidal, um, meaning that along the harbor, it's only 48 feet wide versus 44 and a half feet wide approximately at the street, is why it, it chokes back there at the corner. It would be impractical to ask them to, um, make the foundation trapezoidal to follow the contours of the lot line.
Sure. All right. With that, do we have any public comment? So we would ask anyone who is on the call that would like to submit a comment or ask a question about this...
Q&amp;A session has started.
...application to please press *6. Again, if you'd like to make a comment, please press *6. And we do not appear to have any requests to make comment on this application. We'll give it a few more seconds. And we have nothing. With that, do we have a motion?
Q&amp;A session is over.
That's okay.
I make a motion out of the board, grant a special permit under 810.2 and Mass General Laws, 48 Section 6, on the application of Alan, uh, Gesascha, uh, 46 Bridge Street in Norwell.
I think we're in, uh... Paul and Deborah Jablonsky.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jablonsky. Pursuant to the plan of, um, uh, Morse Engineering, dated, uh, 2020, and that the, and also, grant the relief, the special permit under 470.6, that the proposed raise and reconstruction will not create any new nonconformities. It will reduce the left side nonconformity, and to the extent that it intensifies nonconformity, um, it is not considered substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second?
Second was Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom.
That was another unanimous, and there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Greg.
Um, with that, is Attorney Rockwood on the line? He's not attorney, I apologize. It is Mr. Rockwood on the line. He is not available.
Who's writing the third?
I'll write, Jablonsky.
All participants are unmuted.
Okay.
Hello, this is Dick Rockwood.
Dick, welcome.
Yes.
All right. Well, with that, we are going to move to our fourth application, that of Alan Cisha, sorry if I am butchering that, of 46 Bridge Street in Norwell, Massachusetts, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with Situate zoning bylaw, Section 470.6 and 810.2, and/or MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or any other relief the Board of Appeals may deem necessary to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot located at 138 River Street.
I'd just like everybody on this call to know that for this application and the next application, everyone is unmuted, so if you would kindly be quiet unless you are speaking and remove background noise. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rockwood, if you could just tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
Yes, okay, so at, uh, I don't know, the 138 River Street here. So we are in the Town of Situate floodplain watershed protection district. Uh, we're also on a barrier beach, uh, it's in the riverfront district, and we're in an AE14 flood zone. So at present, there's a, uh, existing structure on the property. Uh, it's about 726 square feet, and, uh, we're proposing to, uh, remove that house and put a new house there on driven piles to meet the barrier beach requirements. Our house is a two-and-a-half-story house. Uh, on the site plan, we have an existing septic system that is in place. Um, we are only 23 feet with our, let's see, with our existing house, we are, I got this right, yeah, 23 feet in the front, uh, which, which will conform, so we brought the house forward. Where existing is 9.7 on the left side of the house, the south side of the house, uh, we will be 9.4. Uh, we're 8.7 existing on the north side of the house, which would be the right side as you're looking towards the river, and we will be the 8.5. So we're, we're better with our setbacks than the existing, and, and it's only required to be eight feet. The rear of the property line, we're actually not going as far back, we're probably a foot western where the existing house is. It took a, a little bit of survey work, but the dotted blue line on your site, site plan, based on that mean-high water line, is the rear of the property line. So, um, our existing house, and I just noticed at this point that there is not actually a dimension because of what the existing house was.
That's, that's not gonna be an issue. We, we can see on the plan that it is...
But we're gonna be western the existing house will be towards the rear, and then we have a deck. So we've made our house conform, um, to not be any more non-conforming than, than it was. It's an underside, it's sort of a non-conforming lot, which is why we're here doing more than the 20%. Um, it's a, it's a two-and-a-half-story house, similar to other houses done in the area, and I don't know if there's anything else pertinent besides that.
I think, I think that will do it. With that, Tom, do you have any questions or comments?
The, the proposed deck, that, is that essentially in the same footprint as the existing deck?
Yeah, pretty much.
I'm just looking at the picture.
Actually, yes, that rear right corner is exactly, so if anything, it's, it's come in a little bit.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, it looks like it actually comes...
The red line's the proposed.
Right, right, so I'm looking at it, mine's not colored, but I see the, I'm guessing the check-in line is the existing.
That's correct.
Colored line is the proposed. Correct?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. So it's bringing in a little bit, okay.
Yeah.
And what's the existing square footage?
The existing square footage on the one-story house is there is 726 square feet. Okay. The proposed square footage...
2901.
I mean, I'm...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking for it, yeah. Yeah, 2905 or something like that?
2901 I had on the application.
I'm looking at the aerials that you submitted in the photos, and this seems to be one of the smallest houses in the neighborhood. I think the...
Yeah, it is.
The proposed would be in line with what the existing neighborhood looks like, so I don't have anything further. What is the percent increase, Dick?
299, Brian.
The way I calculated it, and I, I, I just realized, it shows, it's, we're adding another 1,126 square feet. So the proposed house is 200... So the proposed house is 2905. The existing house is 20, uh, 726. So we're actually adding 1,126. So...
And what is the percentage increase?
55% is what I'm calculating.
Nope, 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 sorry. That is, that is not correct. It's over 100%, right?
Well... So we're all on the same page. Let's just agree on what that percent increase is.
Okay.
It's an increase of 2,175 square feet, starting at 726...
Going to 2905. So 2905, minus, it's gotta be like 200... Yeah, I'm 2,179.
It's 299.58% is the increase.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, okay.
Greg would have had it for us faster, he's probably laughing at us.
Right.
The next time one of these applications come in, Dick, if you could do that before the meeting, that would be helpful.
Yes, uh...
Thank you. Um, other than that, you're using the average front yard setback?
I am, what was that?
Your, your engineer purports to use the average front yard setback on River Street.
Uh, yes, he does.
Other, you're not seeking a variance for an encroachment into the front yard, is that correct?
No, I am not.
Okay, so you're using the average setback. However, the information that I have does not have the average setback on River Street. Uh, that's something that we will need from Stenbeck and Taylor.
Just, just to, uh, to interject for a moment, this is Anthony.
Yep.
The plan I am looking at on file here in the hearing room does note on the plan that the average front setback on the street is 13.3 feet.
Yep.
It, it does, but, um, I, that's, I do note that on the plan, but it doesn't reference the properties, and it's typically what we have is, is they say the, the street number and the setback.
Okay.
In 200 feet either direction.
Right. He's done the work, so we can have him add it on this plan?
Thank you.
Okay, refer, yeah, ref, okay. Yep.
That's all I have.
Oh, that was Brian. We heard from Tom. Ed, anything?
I'm just still trying to calculate the, uh, the percent of increase. I mean, the, the proposed structure is four times the size of the existing structure.
That's, that's correct, roughly a 300% increase.
297.9, right? It's, it's proposed square footage minus the square footage, right? That number divided by the current square footage is the percent increase.
That's right.
How much of that is the percent of increase as opposed to, okay.
Okay.
No comment.
Wow. Where our algebra teachers everywhere are kicking themselves. Uh, George, or Ed, I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's straightforward. Um, yeah, I think the only, I echo the previous comment, which is, if we're going to rely on, um, the average front setback, we have to have the numbers, right?
So, guys, I'm sorry, I gotta add on that. When, when a registered land surveyor puts on a plan that the average setback on the street within 200 feet is 13.3, I'm inclined to trust them. If, if we start making surveyors show their work, we're going to need a lot more on the plans, because how are we gonna, do we want them to show their work on where the mean-high water line is?
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. I, I respectfully disagree. They, they have the, the information, and it's, it's, it's in a box, and it takes seconds to add it to a plan, and it's, it's, it's all there in black and white. I don't think it's too much to ask, and I don't think it's, it's in any way confusing.
Then, then let's get it added.
Okay.
I think, I think past practice is also waved in here, and we have found situations where, um, different surveyors have not necessarily understood our bylaw versus other towns' bylaws. Um, we're 200 feet to a dissecting wave, blah, 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 I mean, that is different from other towns. So it's helpful to be, just make sure they're using the same language.
Sure. Let's do it.
May I add something?
Is that Mr. Rockwood?
Yeah, it is.
Yes, please.
If I may add something? No, so I agree with you were saying about that information, because they've done the work, so listing it is not a, a problem, and I'll make sure that my surveyors do it. But I, I run into this on three or four different projects, your zoning chart. Everything on that chart is about, you know, setbacks and square footage of lot. So my, my surveyors have been confused, and they think that when it says square footage, they're talking about percentages of coverage. I think the form needs to be a little more clear, that one's about percent of lot coverage, and then the, and then in addition, a, a box that shows the map of the existing house.
Sure.
I've done it three times in the last six months, and I keep going around in there, and that, and the surveyor who's doing this sometimes doesn't know all the math on the square foot of the house. That would fall under me showing through my plans, through my AutoCAD plans. So I, I think it's been four jobs in Situate in the last seven or eight months, and it's been back and forth with the surveyors. And I apologize for my math here, uh, where to do this. You know, there's also a difference in how you could calculate the existing versus proposed when you want the percent of increase. But I agree with the way you just did it, with the subtracting the existing from the proposed, and then doing, that's where the 1,126 came in, and, and then working out the formula, because I had done the same thing, it was just under 300%. But, uh, I, that's something I think that could be worked on with the form, because it really creates some confusion.
Sure.
And getting the paperwork in back and forth, so just a suggestion.
I know we have some...
I can have the surveyor put that math on the drawing. If you are inclined to accept and move forward with this project, I, I will have that turned in in four or five days here.
That would be great, if, if that could go onto the plan along with the butter and average setback information.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Okay.
With that, I mean, I guess I didn't really take a turn there, I don't really have anything to add. At the, at the end of the day, the proposed dwelling is entirely within the setback, and as Ed likes to say, there really isn't much they can do about the lot. With that, we are going to switch to public comment. Again, anyone on the call who would like to ask a question or make a comment about this application, we ask that you press star six to be placed into queue.
Q and A session has started.
Again, that's star six, if you have any questions or would like to make a comment. We don't have anyone as of yet, we will give it just a few more seconds. Sounds like that may have been someone who jumped on. If you have, if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question about this application on River Street, please press star six. And we do not have any, and with that, we're going to close the public comment.
Q and A session is over.
With that, do we have a motion?
I make a motion on the application of Alan Gashia, 46 Bridge Street, Norwell, Mass, for his request for a special permit slash finding pursuant to Situate zoning bylaws 470.6 and 810.2, indoor mass general law 48, Section 6, that the proposed raise and reconstruct of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, nor does it increase or intensify any existing non-conformities, but to the extent it does, uh, it's not substantially more detrimental. And also that, uh, the proposed plan, as was prepared by Stenbeck and Taylor, um, which is dated December 23, 2019, um, does comply with Section 470.6.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Another unanimous. Thank you.
I'll do that one, it's Tom.
All right. For anyone watching on TV, if you would like to dial in to have the opportunity to make a comment or ask a question after an application, the phone number to dial into the conference line is 425-436-6308, and the access code to enter when prompted is
I'm okay, that's all I...
I handed on the...
Yeah, yeah. You going upstairs?
Little, little bit of background noise there, if we could just try to keep that down for those of us that are not muted. With that, we have our fifth application on the evening. That of, did I do that right? I did. Fifth application, Neil Greco of P.O. Box 40 in Homarock, Massachusetts, requesting a special permit or finding pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, or any other relief the Board of Appeals deems necessary to add a second story addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. The site being located at 319 Central Avenue in Situate. Mr. Rockwood, once again, if you could just give us a, a quick update on what's happening here.
Uh, this is an existing structure in a, uh, AE flood zone, um, and what we're proposing to do is add a second story over just a partial, uh, section of the house. So we're not doing anything on the ground with the footprint, we're not expanding the footprint. We're strictly going up over what's existing. It's a one-story right now, and we're going over approximately two-thirds of the house on the upstairs with the, with a bedroom addition.
All right, and so, am I understanding correctly that the, so the, the addition will be entirely a second story only and will not be going beyond the footprint of the existing home in any way? And the existing square footage is 950 square feet?
Uh, yeah, existing first floor, I had, I think it was 914 square feet. Here's what I had done on my, uh, my calculation. I might have done something on the zoning calculation, and the proposed...
Go ahead, the proposed square footage.
The proposed square footage on the second floor was 619 square feet.
That's, okay, so that, that would be our increase representing a 65% increase.
Right.
With that, I mean, I guess we should add, for the sake of the public and the record, the existing non-conformities at the site are front setback, left side setback, right side setback, lot area, lot width, lot frontage, and the partridge in the pear tree.
And as with Jablonski on Jericho, in this case, there is an intensification by virtue of adding the second floor. There's an intensification of the pre-existing non-conformities, and then the question is, does it, will it be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current pre-existing non-conformities? And I think that, uh, that it would pass that test with flying colors.
I would tend to agree.
Sorry.
Tom would tend to agree. George?
I agree.
Ed?
No problem.
All right. I, I, that one got a little crazy, but it, it, do any of the other members of the board have anything else to add or ask?
Just one question, this isn't in the Situate floodplain, right?
I mean, so...
I don't believe so.
Because I think they just, they're just looking for, uh, 810. I just don't know it. 470.6. I was looking at the site plan, it didn't reference anything, but, no.
Yeah, no, it...
They didn't request that relief.
They did not request that relief.
That was not advertised?
It falls within a 200-foot riverfront area, I don't think that is 470.
Well, it is. The plan does show a 1% annual chance floodfront boundary plotted by FEMA firm.
It's just, it's just whether or not the Situate map from the 70s includes it as well.
Yeah, I mean, the...
I don't know.
The 7th T at Widows Walk has a 1% chance of flooding. Mike?
We can only, uh, grant the relief that was sought.
I, I would agree as well.
So if they find out at a later time, they need additional relief, they'd have to come back.
Right.
Agreed.
All right. With that, we're going to open up the public comment again. Just to remind everyone, if you would like to ask a question or make a comment, please press star six on your phone, so you can be placed into queue.
Q and A session has started.
We do not have anyone in queue. Again, it's star six to be placed into queue. Give it another couple seconds here. All right, with that, we're going to close the public comment section.
Q and A session is over.
And I'm going to make a motion to grant the necessary relief under the application of Neil Greco of Homarock to add a second story which shall not go beyond the footprint of the existing single fam, single-story dwelling.
All participants are muted.
And find that the proposed second story addition does not create any new non-conformities. To the extent it extendsfies any of the existing non-conformities, such intensifications are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Second? Tibbs?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
I will be happy to write that one. All right. Thank you, Mr. Rockwood. With that, we are moving to our sixth application. That of Kristen Mullin Conley of 17 First Avenue in Situate, requesting a special permit finding pursuant to Section 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw and/or MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or any other relief the Board of Appeals deems necessary... 6, and/or any other relief the Board of Appeals deems necessary to allow the extension of a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. The property is located at 17 First Avenue in Situate. And yes, if you could please unmute the applicant, that would be fantastic. So everyone will be unmuted as we unmute the applicant here. We ask anyone else on the call to please keep an eye on the background noise.
All participants are unmuted.
And so Ms. Mullin Connolly, are you on the line?
I am. I'm her husband. My name is Robert Connolly. Thank you for all getting together tonight.
Thank you, Robert. Robert, if you could just tell us quickly what's going on here?
Well, I don't have a copy of the plan in front of me, but basically there was an existing house, and then at some point they did an addition. And if you have the plans in front of you...
I do.
You'll see it. That addition they did in the back is just, we just want to knock that down and then square it off to the existing house. I don't know the total square footage or the length. I think it's on the plan.
Yes, so just for the record, you're going from 1,828 square feet, sorry to interrupt there, to 3,700 square feet. That's 107% increase.
Correct.
Is that a two-story, no, one-story addition?
It will be a two, it'll be a three with a massive bedroom, but it will be, that addition that we're applying for will be just two-story.
Two-story, okay.
So the current bump out that was added to the house is a two-story addition? You're tearing down the two-story addition and putting up a two-story addition?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then just for everyone who doesn't have the benefit of the plan, the only existing non-conformity on this lot is the front setback, which currently sits at 15.3 feet. They are not touching the main structure of the house, which occupies the front setback, so that will remain exactly the same. And the rest of the characteristics of this lot are conforming, and the addition will fall entirely within the building envelope, the allowable setbacks.
I have a question.
And garage, right?
Yes, that's my question. The garage, is the garage being relocated, or are you keeping two garages?
The one that's, there's the old one, which we can't touch. We can't move her, so we're going to keep the old one. And then the other one, the new one, will be just new construction off to the left whenever we get to it.
Is there a living space proposed in the garage?
I didn't hear that.
Sorry. Is there anything other than car parking proposed for the garage? Is there a workroom, a living room, a room above, anything like that?
The new one?
Yes.
Yeah, there might be a living loft, like a loft space.
Okay, so typically, we would want that increase in livable square footage, especially if it was going to be heated, included in the application? Otherwise, and my fellow board members should correct me if they disagree, there's an argument that you would need to come back.
I would argue that, I would argue on the same, Anthony, at Tippett's feet. The advertisement for it was for relief associated with increasing the size of the dwelling, not the proposed garage that's on the plan. So it's not part of the plan. It's not part of the application.
Great. And they don't need any relief, correct? Even though the, yeah, they don't need relief to build the garage. It's within the building envelope.
Correct. Not the garage, but if they're going to add living area, that's a horse of a different color.
Right.
You know, my fear is that this is going to be a minute situation where the garage turns into a carriage house, and, you know, in 20 years, you've got two structures or two houses on one lot.
Well, they, there's code to deal with that.
Absolutely.
And it's not an undersized lot, so there's a little bit less code to deal with that on purpose. But I think to Ed's point, the way I'm looking at it, they don't need any relief for the garage, so it's not really for us to be concerned with.
Yeah, just in the event the applicant at some point wants to add living area, they'll have to come back in front of us.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And that new porch off the right side of the house, that's going to be uncovered?
No, that has a roof.
Like a pitched roof?
It's a good question, Tom, but not living space, I guess. Anyone else from the board? No? Okay. With that, we are going to open it up to public comment. We would ask anyone who is on the conference line, who would like to make public comment, to please press *6 to be placed into queue.
Q and A session has started.
Again, please press *6 if you have a question or a comment about this application. We have nobody. We'll give it a few more seconds. Okay. We're going to close the public comment section.
Q and A session is over.
And with that, do we have a motion?
Question, Anthony?
Yes.
All participants are muted.
Anthony, if that is a covered porch, isn't that additional living area?
Well, I am not sure that the code defines a covered porch as living area. I believe the code defines it as space within the structure that is absolutely subject to our dimensional requirements. But I, this is where I would typically lean on Bob, if he traditionally has included the enclosed space of a porch in his 20% calculation. I don't believe that he has. And Annie said that as long as it is not heated, he would not.
That's where I was going. If it's an open porch, even though it's enclosed, it's considered to be part of the gross living area, not the net living area?
Yes, I would agree with that as well, just the same as if you have a hit roof or something and you end up with new wall space. My only concern is this strikes as something that could easily be added to, if it's roof, could be heated and added to that living area without necessarily coming back to the board, even though it is an increase in percentage. It's a, well, it's tripping away at the, nibbling away at it and getting a bigger, bigger house.
Well, I mean, to address that concern for a minute, I'm of the opinion that we would approve it if they were adding that as an addition. It's behind the current front setback. It is within the building envelope, and we don't even have an undersized lot, so we're not talking about an intensification of a lot size or width non-conformity.
Right. They could do it if I write, but the where they do it, so they, as it is, and they're purely before us, then because of the front yard setback.
That does become the side yard setback, yes. Is that what you said?
Well, the front yard setback's the only reason they have to be before us.
I agree completely. Alright. With that, yeah, sorry, Ed, I just wasn't following you, but just, so I'm not mistaken, right? The only non-conformity at this site is the front yard setback. Everybody's on the same page with that?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Alright. With that...
And I agree with you, Anthony, and typically, if someone came before us with a front yard setback issue, and no practical way to, it wasn't a raise and reconstruct, they were holding the front yard, and they wanted to add a side or rear component within the building envelope, it would be typically, you know, something we would strongly consider supporting. But if this addition were to be incorporated into the living space, and it happened to increase by more than 20%, they technically would have to come before us again.
Absolutely.
Because it still would be a front yard setback issue.
Well, 100%. It would recreate the same issue that they're here today, without a doubt.
Yep, okay.
With that, do we have a motion?
Move to grant the relief as sought by the applicant for a special permit/finding pursuant to 810 of the Situate zoning bylaw and Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 6, to allow the extension of a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling, increasing the gross floor area by approximately 107%. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Once again, quickly, if anyone is watching on TV and wishes to call in so they can have access to make public comment on any of the applications, the phone number to dial in is 425-436-6308. And the access code is 538-960-pound. Thank you. We have arrived at, yes, please. Annie?
Brian, will you be writing this decision for First Avenue?
17 First Ave., yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our seventh application of the evening. That of William Baird of 111 Summer Street in Situate, requesting a special permit finding pursuant to Section 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw and/or MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or any other relief the Board of Appeals deems necessary to allow the extension of a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. The property being located at 111 Summer Street in Situate. Ian, do we have the applicant on the line?
Greg?
Yes.
Would you please explain this application to the board?
Yes. For the record, this is Greg Morris, Registered Engineer, Morris Engineering. I'm representing William Baird, the property owner and applicant. This is his property located at 111 Summer Street. It's located in the R1 zoning district. It developed with Mr. Baird's single-family home. It was built circa 1900. The lot itself is non-conforming with respect to lot width, where the dwelling is placed, and the dwelling is non-compliant with respect to the front yard setback and the side yard setback on the north side of the building. The house is an antique, and as such, the bedrooms on the second floor have a very steep staircase to get to them. Mr. Baird and his wife are in their 70s, and they really desire to have a first-floor living arrangement. So off the back of the house, they have proposed to construct an addition. The addition would have a first-floor bedroom, laundry setup, and full bath within the addition. The addition is slightly closer to the north side lot line than what exists today. The house that exists today is at 14.5 feet from the lot line. The proposal would put the addition at 10.6 feet from the lot line. The increase in the living area of the house, the house would end up at 2,231 square feet overall. It represents a 37.3% increase over the house that's there today. In your file, you should see that there have been several letters from abutters, most notably the direct abutter on that north property line, the Davison's, all in support of the project. I turn it over to you.
Thanks, Greg. I, you know, like a couple of the other ones we've had tonight, I think we have a pretty clear intensification of a non-conformity, but kudos to the applicant and you in that makes it a lot harder to argue that that intensification is substantially more detrimental when the abutter who you're getting closer to is supporting the application. I don't have anything else.
Greg, Brian Sullivan, Greg, you're going, looking from the street, looking from Summer Street toward the house, you're increasing the encroachment on the left side. Can you explain to me, perhaps topographically, why you wouldn't just jog it to the right?
Sure. So off on the right, there's a barn in proximity to the house, and so where we have the addition now, it's eight feet from the barn to the addition, and if we didn't want to jog it any closer than that eight-foot separation to the existing barn.
And I would guess that there'd be firefighting reasons, health and safety reasons, why that would be ill-advised?
Yes, you wouldn't want to have two structures any closer than that. It also, leaving that width, gives us access to the backyard for maintenance of the septic system, which is in the backyard.
Thank you.
Eric Tibbetts, Greg, you've also got a 100-foot Wedland buffer that you'd be encroaching upon. Were you to jog to the right? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I presume that that barn is approximately the same age as the house, so the 100-year-old barn?
I don't know the age specifically of the barn, but I would guess it's of the same vintage. It is an older barn. It is not one that has been recently built.
So we're talking about preserving historic structures and maintaining character of neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera?
I think so.
Yes, we are, Ed.
Tom, George, anything to add?
Just piggybacking off what Brian said, if you jog that to the right, the only access to that septic system, or maybe future septic system, would be essentially bringing machinery through the 50-foot Wedland buffer, correct?
That seems great.
Sure, correct. Or hypothetically, being able to, which probably you wouldn't be able to.
I would add, that septic system is relatively new. That was replaced, I believe, in the last five years. I don't have anything else.
Alright. George?
No, that's it. I don't know that you could do it any other way.
I think...
I'm working at it.
I would agree. With that, we are going to switch to the public comment again. If you are on the conference line and you would like to ask a question or make a comment about this application, please press *6.
Q and A session has started.
Anyone, again, you'd be pressing *6. Anyone, again, you'd be pressing star six. Give it a couple more seconds. All right, we are going to end the public comment section.
Q and A session is over.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, thank you very much for hearing the applications tonight.
Thank you, Greg.
Who's on that one? Should I be up again? We do need to vote. Do we have a motion?
I would move to grant the applicant's request for a special permit finding under Massachusetts General Law Act, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Situate zoning bylaw, Section 810.2.
I'll second that.
The proposed addition, the proposed addition while increasing, increasing an encroachment is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the current encroachment.
I will second that as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. There we go. I almost forgot to vote there, it's getting a little warm in here in the hearing room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
All right. What's?
Do you want to write it, or do you want Tom to write it?
I'm happy to write that one. And with that, we are moving to our final application on the evening, which is a request for modification of the comprehensive permit issued on February 10, 2003, and most recently modified on April 11, 2019, for the property at 90 Stockbridge Road in Situate. Application is made by Dakota Partners, and it's a request to modify the comprehensive permit wherein the change is to allow the addition of a half bathroom to five of the F1 marketable units appearing in that comprehensive permit. The addition to accommodate each of the five half bathrooms will be built out of the side of the buildings shown on the plan, and I have the plan here for the benefit of the record. There are five half baths, which will involve a small jog out of the exterior wall of each of these townhome units, and the additions are to Unit 13, Unit 18, Unit 12, 27, and I don't really have any questions or comments. I am certain that these additions are to make these units better positioned to sell. I think that's in the town's interest, I think it's in the public's interest, and I don't have much of a concern about the size of the increase to the footprint of these five units, but anyone else on the board have any questions or anything to add?
Anthony, I, I would just raise the question of whether or not this is a substantial change. I believe that it is not, and I think that if the board had chosen to do nothing, it would have been constructively approved, because we have so many days in which to act, and we could have just done nothing because it's, it's a, it's a minor change. However, I applaud your decision to, to give it a hearing and to put it to a vote, but I think that, you know, given the current environment, it would have been, there would have been no harm or, or no foul committed to have not acted on this, other, other than just to let it be constructively approved.
I would agree completely, you know, we're going to have a meeting either way, and I think, it just made sense to put this on the docket. I agree with you that I, I'm inclined to find that this is in, not a substantial change.
I would agree.
I concur.
And I would move that we approve the change as proposed.
Is there any public comment, if we have a hearing?
Yeah, we, we should, we should do that. We're going to open the public comment again. It is star six.
Q and A session has started.
Star six to be placed into Q for any of those of you who have stuck around with us for the full tilt here, but there's no one on there. Star six, if you'd like to make a comment. We're going to give it another few seconds. We have, we have a comment.
Go ahead, comment.
Think we may have a member of the public who pressed star six?
Hi, do you have a comment?
Hello? Yeah, this is Mark Fallow with Dakota Partners. I'm just calling in to see if you guys had any further questions or comments about the project.
Mark, I, I am good. We are, my crystal ball says we're on the verge of finding that these half bathrooms are not a substantial change, but anyone else on the board have any comments for Mark?
No, thank you, making up it, Mark.
Yes, we, we appreciate, Mark, you're making yourself available.
Not a problem, not a problem, but thank you, I appreciate you guys taking the time to look at this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, we are, if there's no one else in Q, Annie, we are going to close.
Q and A session is over.
And I'll make that motion that Brian started to find that the addition of the five, or the addition of the half bathroom to five of the units, as per shown, as shown on the plan submitted with the application, that the board find that that does, is not a substantial change to the comprehensive permit.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Getting unanimous? Thank you. With that, Annie, do we have any other orders of business? We do not. I would make a motion that we close the hearing. I guess, before I do, thank you to the board members for taking the time, thank you to everyone out there for being patient while we figured out the best way to handle things, and good luck to everyone.
Thank you to Annie.
Yes.
Yeah, great job.
Yeah, thank you to Annie.
Thank you, thanks for figuring out the conference system.
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn?
No, moved.
All those in favor?
Second?
Aye.
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 There we go. Nice work, team.